My name is Lucy Summers and I'm the DFO for the Hanford Site. I'd like to remind people of a few items before we get started. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the requirements of the Federal Advisory Committee Act, and each member has a joint responsibility for assuring that the operating ground rules are observed and discussions are conducted in a respectful manner. I appreciate your attendance today and I look forward to today's meeting. Josh?
Thank you. A couple of administrative items before we begin. This meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Hanford Site YouTube. A small contingency there. The breakout sessions will not be recorded and they will not be broadcast online due to technological limitations. And if you haven't already, we have a sign-in sheet up front. We appreciate it if you type your name and organization. If you're online, we would appreciate it if you put your name and organization into the chat so we can get that right. That's all we have for now. Susan?
Welcome, everyone. I'm especially interested and happy to see what we're going to get from Ecology on the REV 9 A permit. I know many of, I know some of you have been waiting for this day for a long time. Some of you may have even commented on the past permit. So I'm not going to talk long. I'm going to turn it right over to Ryan and Annette and let's get down to this. We've got a, this document is humongous. Tell us what we're getting to see.
Can we confirm that the team folks can hear?
Does someone on teams like to confirm that they can hear?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. All right. And before jumping to the presentation, I do see a lot of unfamiliar faces. Would you like to go around the room and present yourselves?
My name is Josh Pattonod. I support the facilitation team.
I'm Ryan Miller with Communications Manager for Department of Ecology that you all know.
I'm Annette Carlson. I'm a Project Manager for the Dangerous Waste Permitting, specifically the Hanford Site Wide Permit, current revision 8C, and the renewal revision 8.
Lucy Summers, DFO for the Hanford Site.
Chris Sutton, Public at Large.
Robert Davis, City of Pasco.
Steve Anderson, Franklin County Representative.
I'm Jacob Reynolds and I'm a guest from CPCCO, former Hatner.
Tom Rogers, Washington State Department of Health.
Good morning. I'm Tammy Lueberg. I'm the 200 area lead and I work on the Dangerous Waste Permit.
I'm Caitlin Burnett. I'm with DOE. I'm the Senior Technical Advisor and I'll be providing agency comments today.
I'm Jay Decker. I'm the new Chair with Ecology, the Science and Engineering Supervisor.
Tom Cecilia, Oregon Department of Energy.
Susan Coleman, Public at Large and Board Chair.
Do we have our Hanford challenge?
I'm Teresa Howell, Washington State Department of Ecology, Section Manager for Compliance and Regulatory Assistance.
I'm Bika Chakaradi. I am with Ecology, the Project Manager of ETA, ADRF, DST and 242A Evaporator.
Moses Givara. I'm the Unit Supervisor for the Tank Waste Treatment Section.
Dan McDonald with Ecology, Project Manager for WTP.
Eddie Hopebrich, Department of Ecology, Acting Deputy Program Manager.
Rob Harmley, the Representative Non-Union, Non-Management Voice.
Larry Bray, Public at Large.
Inside?
Larry Hallfield, City Mayor. Brian Foniki, AGMS. China Frona, the Facilitation Team.
We've seen them through the facility.
And we have a handful of folks online. I will be going down the list as I see it. Please be ready to open your microphones. Dan Solitz.
Good morning, Dan Solitz, Member of the Public.
Dave D. Simone.
Good morning, Dave D. Simone, Department of Ecology, Engineer.
Catherine Gluck.
Catherine Gluck, Lead Hydrogeologist for Nuclear Waste Program.
Matt Hendrickson.
Good morning, Matt Hendrickson, Oregon Department of Energy.
William Hudson.
Good morning, Bill Hudson, Washington Department of Ecology, DST REV 9 Permit Coordinator or Writer.
Jeff Wyatt.
Jeff Wyatt, Oregon Hanford Cleaner Board.
Kermit Mankiller.
Kermit Mankiller, Nosferu tribe, ERWM, Long-Term Stewardship Planner.
Larry Haley.
Michael Lee.
Michael Lee, Columbia Basin College.
Jane McPage.
Jane McPage, Department of Health.
Li Wang.
I'm Li Wang, Hydrogeologist, Yakamination ERWM.
Anna McFadden.
Anna McFadden, Department of Ecology, Public Involvement.
Steve Needles.
Steve Needles, Engineer with Department of Ecology.
Megan Perkins.
Megan Perkins, Department of Health.
Rose Ferry.
Rose Ferry, Yakamination, Environmental Restoration Waste Management Program, Project Tracking Resource Analyst, and also Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for Yakamination.
And Simone.
Good morning, Simone Anter, Columbia Riverkeeper.
Thank you very much, everyone. With that, I think we're getting ready to start our presentation. Let me just talk.
Good morning, everyone. And let me know if you can't hear me if you need the microphone because they told me they didn't need the microphone. So I'm going to try to project my voice so everybody can hear. Thank you for asking the Nuclear Waste Program to present information again on the upcoming Hanford Site Wide Permit Renewal. Yes, we have a long legal name for the Hanford Site Wide Permit. It's called the Hanford Facility Resource Conservation and Recovery Act Permit Dangerous Waste Portion for the Treatment, Storage and Disposal of Dangerous Waste. It's commonly called the Hanford Site Wide Permit or Site Wide Permit in our correspondence. The Hanford Site is operating under revision 8C and we are currently working on revision 9A, an updated version of the renewal that was transmitted for public review in 2012. So what is the Hanford Site Wide Permit? The Hanford Site Wide Permit has requirements for the Treatment, Storage and Disposal of Dangerous and Mixed Waste at the Hanford Site. Our mission is to issue a revised permit renewal. That's one, enforceable, provides clear and specific requirements and permit conditions. Two, consistent, applies regulations consistently throughout the permit and across the authorized Washington State Dangerous Waste Program. Three, implementable, ensuring permit requirements that reflect facility conditions and permitted activities. And four, equivalent, ensuring compliance with the Washington State Dangerous Waste Regulations and that's protective of human health and the environment. So I know I've gone over this slide with you all before and a couple, a couple of times through, through this particular committee and the Hanford Advisor Program, just bring it here as a reminder that EPA delegated authority to the Washington State Department of Ecology to regulate dangerous waste and dangerous waste components of mixed waste. Although EPA delegated the regulatory authority to Washington State, we still work closely with EPA. We work with them closely on our permits to keep them informed and involved. We don't have the authority to regulate waste that is solely radioactive. The U.S. Department of Energy manages radioactive materials and radioactive waste. So the purpose of today's meeting, the purpose of today's meeting is to provide you with more information on the renewal to prepare you for the upcoming comment period. We will share high-level permitting information and breakout groups. The breakout groups are as follows. The first, the Waste Treatment and Mobilization Plant and Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Group. Second group, Tank Farms 242A Evaporator and the Liquid Effluent Retention Facility and 200 Area Effluent Treatment Facility. Third group, the Solid Waste Operations Complex, also known as SWAP, and Corrective Action. And the fourth group is other Central Plateau and River Porter Unit Groups. I'm going to read off the list here. 324 Building Waste Encapsulations and Storage Facility, Purex, B Plant, Capsule Enorm Storage, 400 Area Waste Management Unit, 300 Area Process Trenches, the 216 Area Ponds, Crigs and Ditches, 241 CX Tanks, and Hexone Storage and Treatment Facility. While these groups don't reflect all the unit groups in the renewal, we are highlighting some of them for you today. But if you have a question on a unit group that I didn't mention or that's not mentioned in this list, just let us know. We'll try to get an answer to you. So following the breakout groups, you will discuss a path forward for potential advice and action as I understand. Next slide, please. Hanford Site Wide Permit History. The Hanford Site Wide Permit was first issued in 1994. The Permit Act, sorry, the Permit Application was submitted through tri-party agreement milestones, and not all the unit groups are included in the first permit. Currently, there are 22 unit groups within the Hanford Site Wide Permit Revision 8C. There are nine operating unit groups, one corrective action unit group, 10 closing unit groups, and two post-closure unit groups. We have supplemental slides at the end of the presentation that provide information on definitions if I'm using a term or something, or you hear a term that I'm using that might be helpful to you. Excellent. All right, moving on to REV 9. For Revision 9 history, the Hanford Site Wide Permit REV 9 Renewal was submitted by the U.S. Department of Energy Certified to Ecology. The draft permit renewal was prepared by Ecology and transmitted for public review on May 1st, 2012. The public comment period was held from May 1st to October 22nd, 2012. And just to give you a little background, typically with renewals, there are 45-day comment periods, but because our renewal is so large, we wanted to give you more time to review the permit renewal and we're going to do the same, which I don't want to steal anything from your slide. Sorry about that. There were 37 unit groups in REV 9, which included all the unit groups that are considered Enorm Status. We received more than 5,000 public tribal nation and permitee comments on the permit renewal. Next slide. Okay, so here is a picture of our 2012 renewal. That's when we printed hard copies for distribution. We don't do that anymore. We provide DVDs or, or you know, we have the, the permit on our website. But this shows how large our permit renewal was, and you might recognize a few of those faces in that, in that group from 2012. At that time, the permit renewal was over 16,000 pages long. Next slide, please. So following the public comment period, we met with EPA to help us use Hazardous Waste and Toxic Reduction Program to develop a path forward for the renewal and to address comments. We agreed to do the following. First and foremost, respond to all public tribal nation, U.S. Department of Energy, and Hanford contractor comments, as well as internal comments that were addressed directly with EPA and the Hazardous Waste and Toxic Reduction Program. This task is continuing as we finish up our unit group workshops, meaning we're taking the comments that we received during the 2012 renewal. We discussed those in workshops. So that's, I just wanted to provide a little more context there. Second, prepare guidance with EPA and the Hazardous Waste and Toxic Reduction Program on all portions of the permit. The draft Hanford Site Wide Permit Revision 9 was reviewed against the guidance. The permit guidance is complete and documented for easy reference by staff. Workshops are ongoing as the last unit groups are completing their work to prepare for the revised renewal. Third, work with the U.S. Department of Energy and Hanford contractors in workshops to develop a revised permit renewal and address any deficiencies and respond to comments. And I just want to say just a little bit here that I, I'm one person just providing this presentation. There are a lot of people who worked on the renewal, a lot of people in Ecology, U.S. Department of Energy, and Hanford contractors. There was a lot of work between 2012 and, and our current time. So I just, I just want to mention that here. Next, manage the Hanford Site Wide Permit Revision 8C. So at the time of the renewal, Ecology did not manage our own permit. USDUE did. They did it for a long time, and so in 2015, we started managing our own permit. We've managed it ever since, and we have procedures in place to keep it up to date. And finally, prepare revised permit renewal for public review. So we committed to do those things after the comment period. So maintaining our permit, so while Ecology worked on the REV 9 Permit Renewal, we continue to update the current Hanford Site Wide Permit Revision 8C. We processed multiple permit modifications, including adding permit information in support of direct feed low-activity waste, such as the effluent management facility and the low-activity waste treatment facility. In addition, shortly after the comment period ended on REV 9, EPA issued a consent agreement and final order against the Department of Energy for violations at the Solid Waste Operations Complex, or SWAP. SWAP includes T Plant Complex, Central Waste Complex, Waste Receiving and Processing Facility, and the Low Level Burial Grounds 31, 34, and 94. Just recently, seven SWAP closure plans were added to the current site, Hanford Site Wide Permit in 2023 through a Class 3 permit modification. I'll just read this off really quickly. They include 4T Plant, 277T Building, 277T Outdoor Storage Area, 271T Cage, 211T Pad, and 221T Sand Filter Pad, the 221T Railroad Cut, and the Central Waste Complex 2401 West Waste Storage Building. So that was added to 8C. Those would be brought into the renewal. So just to give you a little bit of information. And those are just some of the permit modifications that we continue to keep 8C current while working on the REV 9 renewal. So we just are highlighting those. All right, on to REV 9A, the revised renewal. So we are in the final stages of completing the revised version of the Hanford Site Wide Permit REV 9, which will be called REV 9A. At this time, the Hanford Site Wide Permit includes 52 separate unit groups. There are 14 operating unit groups, two corrective action unit groups, 34 closing unit groups, two, two post-closure unit groups. The renewal will be approximately 20,000 pages in length, and it will also include supporting documentation. The supporting documentation will be included in our library. Okay, so we're going to stay on this slide just for a little bit because I want to give you an idea of the portions within a particular unit group. Now, some of these unit groups won't have all of these addenda. For example, closing unit groups don't always have all of these addenda because the requirements are included in their closure plan. But I'm providing this to you now so you have an understanding of the things that you'll be looking at within a unit group when you revise, or when you review the permit. So first, a fact sheet. A fact sheet is different than Ecology's focus sheets, which you're probably familiar with, the Public Involvement folks in those that we have public comment periods. A fact sheet is a technical document that includes information on the basis for the permit renewal and information on the facility or site. Each unit group will have its own fact sheet, and then the, the renewal will have an overall fact sheet that kind of provides the, the history of what's happened since 2012. Next, permit conditions. Unit-specific permit conditions incorporate all the portions of the unit group, such as the addenda, attachments, such as engineering drawings and documents. The unit-specific conditions support the standard Part 1 and 2 conditions. Establishing unit-specific permit conditions is key to ensuring the permit is complete and enforceable. Next, Part A or Addendum A. The Part A form includes information on the permittees, the nature of business, description of the waste, facility map, and photographs, just to name a few of the things of the Part A. Waste Analysis Plan or Addendum B. The Waste Analysis Plan includes information about each waste stream that is managed in a dangerous waste management unit. It also includes information on characterization, waste designation, and sampling methods. Next, Process Information or Addendum C. The Process Information Addendum includes information on procedures, description of equipment, structures, processes the facility uses to safely manage dangerous waste. It also includes information on the receipt of waste processing and treatment of waste. The Groundwater Monitoring Plans or Addendum D. Groundwater monitoring requirements only apply to those Treatment, Storage and Disposal units that have had releases to the environment. So not all the unit groups will have a groundwater monitoring plan. Security or Addendum E. Security requirements prevent unauthorized or unknowing entry into the Hanford Site as a whole and at the individual Treatment, Storage and Disposal Unit Groups. The Preparedness and Prevention or Addendum F. Facilities must be designed, constructed, maintained, and operated to minimize the possibility of fire, explosion, or any unplanned sudden or unsudden, non-sudden release of dangerous waste or dangerous waste constituents to air, soil, surface, or groundwater, which could threaten the public health employees or the environment. Next, Personnel Training or Addendum G. This includes permitee personnel training requirements, including classroom training and on-the-drive training for the facility and on the Hanford Site. The Closure Plan or Addendum F. Addendum H. The Closure Plan includes regulatory requirements and information on the closure of Treatment, Storage, and Disposal Unit Groups. The Inspection Plan or Addendum I. The Inspection Plan includes information on the permitees' responsibility to inspect their facility on a schedule. Inspections are completed to prevent malfunctions, deterioration, operator error, or releases to the environment. The Contingency Plan or Addendum J. The Contingency Plan must be developed to lessen the potential impacts of an emergency event, and the plan must be implemented immediately whenever such an emergency event occurs. At the Hanford Site, the Contingency Plan is also known as the Building Emergency Plan or the Facility Response Plan. A contingency plan is supportive of the Hanford Emergency Management Plan, which is also attachment 4 in the permit, and it has requirements focused on the Hanford Site as a whole. Finally, Post-Closure or Addendum K. Post-closure of the facility begins after closure of the facility, and so that addendum would include those requirements. Next slide, please. So I'm going to kind of go over an outline of what the renewal will include. First, standard permit conditions, which I mentioned before going through the unit-specific conditions, are the Part 1 and 2 conditions. Part 1 conditions come from the Dangerous Waste Regulations under WAC 173303, and the Part 2 conditions are also based on the regulations but are specific to the Hanford Site. The Part 1 and 2 standard conditions were updated to be consistent with other Washington State permits. Attachments 1 through 11 support the standard permit conditions, and the permit conditions and attachments apply to all the unit groups. Going through the operating unit groups then, as you can see, we have 14 operating unit The ones in bold, I don't know if you can tell on this slide, the ones in bold, but the ones in bold, the Low-Activity Waste Treatment System and the Capsule Enorm Storage, they were added to REV 8C in the last 10 years or so. And so they will be brought into Revision 9A. So you're, you're doing a comparison between REV 9 and REV 9A. You're not going to see those particularly unit groups. So we wanted to bring that to your attention by holding the ones that are going to be kind of new to the renewal. Let's see, I think that was all I was going to say on that one. I'm not going to read through the list of all the operating unit groups. If you have any questions, you know, we can certainly talk about it in the breakout groups or we can talk about it in your presentation. The next group is the closing unit groups. So we have a very long list of closing unit groups, and I'm sorry, this is a tough slide to see, you know, on the screen. But again, we have a long list of what we call new unit groups to the closing unit groups, and some of those are, so I'll just say, we have about 19 additional closing unit groups we did in the REV 9 renewal. And the reason is that what T Plant was delineated, and I'll say CWC, were delineated a little into individual unit groups, so they will close individually. So that's why, you know, besides we have some new closing unit groups here, Waste Encapsulation Storage Facility A through F was added to 8C, and so that will be brought into REV 9. You see all the T Plant and Central Waste Complex closing unit groups. 324 Dangerous Waste Management Units is new to REV 9A. And then 8Y102 and 325 HLV, that stands for High Level Vault Tanks. Those are all new to the REV 9A renewal. So just wanted to bring it here, we have a large group of closing unit groups. Next slide, please. So we've combined the corrective action and post-closure unit groups here. Corrective Action unit groups include comprehensive environmental response compensation and liability act past practice groups and Resource Conservation Recovery Act past practice groups. They're organized as operable units in the tri-party agreement. They are in our RECA permit as corrective action units CA1 for waste management units and corrective action units CA2 for groundwater operable units. For our post-closure unit groups, those unit groups going through post-closure, they include the 300 Area Process Trenches PCU1 and the 183H Solar Evaporation Basins PCU2. So I'm just bringing this slide to you with regard to REV 9. These are the unit groups that were included in the REV 9 renewal in 2012, and we have closed them out in 8C through permit modification. So they include the 331C Storage Unit, operating unit group 15, was closed out of the permit in 2016. 1301 in Liquid Waste Disposal Facility, closing unit group 2, was closed out of the permit in 2018. 600 Area Purge Water Storage and Treatment Facility, closing unit group 8 in 2018. 207A South Retention Basin, closing unit group 9, was closed out of the permit in 2017. 1706KE Waste Treatment System Facility, closing unit group 16, was closed out of the permit in 2018. 1325 in Liquid Waste Disposal Facility, post-closure unit 3, was closed out of the permit in 2018. And 1324 in Empowerment and 1324 in a Percolation Pond, post-closing unit group 4, was closed out of the permit in 2017. And I'll just mention here, the comments that we received in REV 9 on these unit groups were provided in our response to comment document. As these unit groups were closed out of the permit, we did provide comments. We did respond to the REV 9 comments. We wanted to close that out, those decisions out. So that's, those are all my slides right now. Ryan, would you want to go into the public involvement?
I was going to talk a little bit about public involvement and slides are familiar with a few of you that have been around for our last couple of briefings, and we'll have a more robust discussion about public involvement this afternoon, when I understand they'll be around to be able to talk about it and give some feedback. But I'll just go over some of the, the basics of public involvement that we're planning. REV 9A, as Annette said, will go out for a 120-day public comment period. It's going to have a lot of moving parts for public involvement, and so the list of things that we're planning to do include tribal nation, tribal nation briefings, and then a combination of informational meetings and public hearings. And I've delineated this a few times, but I wanted to clarify again for the group that informational hearing, we call informational meetings different from public hearings because informational meetings is where we'll just provide like information about the permit and the unit groups and do like question and answer session with the attendees. And we anticipate holding those meetings, abried meetings in person, online, and possibly hybrid. And then public hearings, that's where we're actually going to take formal like testimony at the meetings. So it's a little bit different from a public meeting. We'll be transcribed meetings, taking formal public comment oral testimony. We anticipate doing abried those in person and online as well. So the informational meetings, we plan to hold So the informational meetings, we plan to hold some of them before the comment period starts slash the beginning stages of the comment period, and then the public hearings, we anticipate those being more towards the middle and kind of last quarter of the comment period. Got a wide variety of educational materials we're working on. If you guys grab these when you walk in the room, we have some samples for you, actually. We have the breakout session slides, but these are some samples of our baseball cards. I will, and I think that they're available online for online books. So they're available online on hanford.gov website, so Josh can provide a link for those that are attending online. So baseball cards is kind of our one-stop shop for basic information about all of the unit groups that are part of the permit. Clarify, these are still in draft form, near-final draft form, so they're still subject to change as we continue wrapping up our public involvement, but these are tools that you can utilize in the breakout sessions today. And also, this packet that was handed out today isn't like, Annette said, it's not all of the unit groups that are within the permit, it's just the unit groups that we're covering today. And also, we are, we're going to be adding like table contents and like an acronym list and some other stuff with the baseball cards, and we'll have an online version that you can actually click through and a bit of a like interactive visual or digital version of it. And we'll do some other various educational materials, including some handouts and some brochures and some stuff like that. We'll have a dedicated website page that focuses specifically on Rev 9A, shares the public meeting information, public hearing information, the digital version of baseball cards, and a variety of other information to help, help folks, you know, make comments and understand the permit better. In addition, we'll be advertising with, you know, social media, paid media, whether it's in the newspapers or paid social media. We'll be issuing a variety of public notices, and typically, we do a 30-day advance notice for a comment period. For this one, we're going to try and do a quicker, like 60-day advance notice, and then like a 30-day, then like a two-week, to really just make sure folks get a good heads up on when the comment period's going to be starting. And then we'll probably doing a news release the day the comment period starts, again, to try and just bring attention to it and help bring awareness. Of course, we anticipate bringing more information to the Hanford Advisory Board and the Oregon Hanford Cleanup Boards as we get closer to the comment period and providing status updates as we kind of have been doing the last few years. So I anticipate bringing more information and briefing to the HAB as we can. And then, it says e-comment site here, that's the formal kind of mechanism that Ecology uses for taking comments on all of our comment periods. That being said, people can submit their comments online on that website, they can also submit them to us in writing, they can send it to our email. We have a couple of different avenues that people can submit their comments. And of course, we'll have public hearings where people can provide their oral comments at meetings as well. But I just want to provide that, again, that brief kind of overview again. I know we'll talk more about public involvement in the afternoon, but thought we'd still cover that briefly for the morning session here. And I'll go to the next slide, but I think that's kind of bring this to discussion, but Annette, was there anything else you wanted to share before we go over to DOE for DOE?
No, just if there's, if there's any questions that you have, like after this meeting, that you just think, oh, I need to ask that question, don't hesitate to reach out to Ryan and the comm staff, and then they can, they can make sure that you can get my email or any of my contact information. I'm happy to answer questions after too.
Before we launch into questions, would anyone from DOE like to provide some advice for technicals?
We have Kalen here.
Yeah, I can share. Kalen's on the DOE. I agree with Annette, this has, this has been quite an endeavor that we've gone through. A number of meetings on, on a weekly basis for many unit groups has been rolling for, you know, five to 10 years. So there's, there's a lot of information, a lot of exchange, and a lot of information's been updated in Rev 9A. There, just for, I guess, awareness, there, there's probably still going to be a fairly large volume of comments. There, there are nuances that Ecology and DOE maybe didn't quite get resolved in, in that forum and will work through in the public space. So don't, don't be surprised if you see a reasonable number of comments from the permities. It is a large limit, so, so we didn't want anybody to be shocked when, when those comments go out. But it's been a wonderful experience, and we've worked really well together, and we've come a long way in going through this process. So I appreciate all the hard work, and I know this is still a heavy lift for Ecology to get this over the line, so thanks for everybody, and we look forward to your comments as well.
Thank you. Anyone available from EPA to provide comments?
I believe Roberto said that they weren't unable to make it up today. It's going to be in and out as much as possible.
All right. And with that, I would like to invite questions from the group. Here online, please raise your hand in teams or enter a comment in the chat. Rob?
What is your criteria for identifying a facility that is closed?
The criteria for identifying a facility that's already closed or for closure?
It's, it's identified in your closed, closed groups. What's the criteria for...
Oh, so like, operating versus closed unit groups?
Right.
Yeah, it's just, it's just, I'll just say really basically, but anyone can feel free to, to add anything for those people here who have closure unit groups, that the operations have ceased and, and there's no more receipt of waste, and so that, that particular facility will be prepared for closure. I know I'm saying it really general terms, but...
Yeah, and if it's helpful too, on your handouts on the slideshow, we have some supplemental slides that has some definitions, I can walk through some of the unit group definitions now real quick. So operating unit groups are sites that are operational and managing waste. Corrective action unit groups are sites that include groundwater operable units, and then the Circla Superfund and RICR operable units. Closing unit groups are sites that are undergoing closure activities, and post-closure unit groups are sites that are already closed and managed under, you know, a variety of post-closure regulations. That's, that's kind of a super short version, that's helpful.
So if it's closed, there's, there are no further contracts with doing anything with the, that particular facility, is that correct?
Well, it, it, so it has to, I mean, so some unit groups remain in closure for a while. I mean, so we have unit groups that remain in closure for a while. So that, it may remain as a closing unit group. Some, some go to closure, and so the permities have to provide information to us that they're ready to close that particular, particular facility or site, or, or we, you know, have a schedule for closure of that particular facility or site.
This is a two-part question. Are you anticipating maybe another 5,000 comments, give or take a few thousand? And if so, do you have a streamlined process to address and resolve those comments so it doesn't take another five to 10 years?
So I can answer for the, maybe you want to answer part of the comments, but yes, we are, we are anticipating a large group of comments. We are. I mean, it's a, it's a 20,000-page document, and so we anticipate a large number of comments. I'm not sure about 5,000, but we are prepared for it if we do. And as far as taking as long, I would say, so this is just my answer, I would say no. It would not take as long to address the comments, revise the documents, and issue the permit. So we have a commitment with EPA to finish all of our renewals by 2026, and so that's our marker. That's, that's really our marker. So we are anxious to provide the permit renewal or public review and issue it final.
By 2026, sometime in 2026.
Did you want anything as far as the e-comment site and...
I don't have anything to add, but Dana, I know you're online, did you just want to provide a quick highlight of what our response to comments process looks like?
Sure. Once we gather all of our comments, we'll sort them into various things and assign them to people to, you know, to the various SMEs to respond and, and such. And I'm not sure how long this process is going to take because we're going to have a lot of comments, I'm assuming. And then, as, as the permit writers are finalizing the permit, we'll be writing up the response to comments, which will include an explanation of what we did for the comment period, the comments themselves, and the individual responses, and then at the back end will be all of the different public involvement, things that we did during the whole process, so people can review them.
A couple of questions. The closure, units that were closed since there were public comments on them, will the conditions under which they were declared closed be subject to public comment? Since, we'd like to review, and there may be comments about whether or not a unit was properly closed. One question.
So we did hold public comment periods for all of them except for 331C. We closed that one out with, last one, Ryan, I believe, Jerry. For that list of unit groups that we closed in 8C from the Rev 9 renewal. So we did hold a public comment period, and I would say, they won't be included in the list of our unit groups, or they, they, they will be included in the fact sheet as far as unit groups that were closed out of 8C. So I would say that since we need to explain what happened since Rev 9 and into Rev 9A, you know, in our fact sheet, that it would, you could probably comment on it and it would be included, I mean, if you had questions on why they were closed out in 8C instead of the renewal. But that's, I mean, I, I hope I'm answering correctly as far as what communications says could be in the scope of the comment period, but I'm just telling you, in my mind, since we do have to explain what happened since 2012, that you, it would be within the scope.
So what I'm hearing from Annette is that the, the units that were closed out in Rev 8C, those, with the exception of one, all went through a comment period already, is what you're saying. So the response to comments for each of those should be available up on our publications.
And a related question for public review is, is there going to be an easy way to crosswalk looking at both from your baseball card and the fact sheet and tutorials online to the comments for that section, to review what comments were and responses to comments, to compare and be able to easily see, you know, if Northwest commented X and why is in the new draft, is there a way to quickly to link to comments and responses, understand why, why why?
What changed, basically?
Or whatever, yeah. What is, what is the response, in other words, and why you chose a particular path?
So looking, excuse me, make sure I'm hearing you right, Jerry, that you're looking to see if there's a way that we'll be able to compare, you know, with the baseball cards and then with the permit and then the comments that were submitted in 2012, to basically compare them to see where comments were incorporated or what happened there?
Yeah, so in other words, an easy way to look at a unit and say, let's take, I'm just going to throw out IDF, okay? Here's the link to our comments and response to comments on IDF, so you can see why we chose this path.
Yeah, that's, we haven't, we hadn't considered a way to like link directly to the comments, but that's, that's a really great idea, so I think I'll take that back to our comm team and see if we can, see if there's a way to, to, to do that quick kind of comparison. That's, yeah.
It'd just be very helpful for public, keyword, yeah, yeah. And, you know, those of us who are going to dig into everything, it's one thing, but for someone to be able to say, I remember commenting on this a decade ago, or I'd like to know if people did comment on the IDF permit and why this was chosen, just to have a link to that section. And my final question is something that wasn't, isn't listed in breakout groups or on the presentation today, but is of one of the top issues for the public is the contingency plan or response for single-shell tanks. What is the status of that, and is that kind of being on today's agenda and discussion and the subject of particular attention to meetings?
So I, I think in the tank farms breakout group, you all were going to discuss that, but did you want to...
So, yeah, any homework with Ecology. So the leak response plan isn't necessarily like highlighted as one item to talk about as a breakout group. It is a part of the contingency plan. Our intention today is to offer some high-level information about each one of the dangerous waste management units, not necessarily to go into anything particular about each, each agenda and what might be in it at this point in time. I will say, the status of the leak response plan, as I currently, you know, have been working on it myself, is that we're still in workshops with Department of Energy. We intend to conclude those workshops here in the coming weeks and incorporate that into the Rev 9 permit. So I, I don't think anybody was prepared to come here and talk specifically about the leak response plan for the contingency plan for SSTs, but the status that I offer is that we're continuing to work on it in workshops and hoping, hoping to include that in the, in the coming weeks here and incorporate it into Rev 9.
I'd just say, I would hope that we will discuss having specific workshops and review of the leak response plan and contingency plan, since it is one of the top priority public centers.
I appreciate the note, it's something we can take back to the team if we have any ability or resources to have something specifically on the leak response plan itself, but at this time, it would be inappropriate to necessarily just talk about it right now because we're still in workshops with Department of Energy on it. But I appreciate the comment, Jerry, and we'll take that back.
Thanks. Thank you for the leeway to ask questions instead of...
Yeah. Yeah, we're off, and then we'll have Tom.
The, one thing I missed on senior is long-term stewardship. When does the transfer over? When does your unit group become part of long-term stewardship?
I mean, I, I don't know that I know the best answer for that. I'm sorry, I don't work on long-term stewardship, but I will say as part of, part of our site-wide permit, that's always in the forefront. You know, we, the permit is, is still a part of the tri-party agreement, which I believe also focuses on long-term stewardship. So when we make decisions with regard to the permit renewal, that's always a consideration for us. I, I know that's probably not a direct answer to your question, but I don't know if you all have any other additions regarding long-term stewardship.
I, I think that from our perspective, we hear this term, long-term stewardship, but we really don't know what it is, and, and that, that needs to be defined. And, okay, and then my next question would be, so it's taken us over 20 years to, to where we are now, maybe more like 25 years. I know there's been a lot of decay. Are any of these units timing out? Do we know that they will time out? I mean, once you get past your 10 half-lives, we don't really care about it, do we?
Well, so...
You know, I mean, just, at some point, the activity will be gone.
Right. So each of the unit groups, we address individually, and so when there is a concern with a particular unit group, we do engage with DOE, and we might have permit conditions or permit requirements that may address what you're talking about. So, I mean, I can't, I can't think of anything specifically.
So the only thing I would point to in particular is, one thing that Annette had brought up at the very beginning of the presentation was that Department of Energy is responsible for the... at the very beginning of the presentation was that Department of Energy is responsible for the radionuclides, right? So Department of Ecology is specifically looking at dangerous waste constituents and looking at what's defined in the Washington Administrative Code for mixed waste, mixed waste itself. So, you know, your question about the half-lives and things like that, that's not necessarily within our, our scope. If, if you're just talking about the radionuclides, if you're talking about mixed waste or dangerous waste itself, our permit does cover those items. And I would point you to the closure plans themselves as the requirements for closure of a particular dangerous waste management unit or facility on the Hanford site. And then I would also point you as an example to our post-closure plans. So some of our units cannot, I guess, and I'm going to bundle this up a little bit, but meet the requirements of like clean closure at the point of closure. And they require post-closure requirements for long-term stewardship or requirements that they have to meet over a certain amount of time. So I would point you to those two addenda in particular, closure and post-closure. And then just refer back to Annette's initial comments on what we, what we permit, what we oversee, what we regulate, and what we might not cover, as you had mentioned about the half-lives of, you know, radionuclides, so.
Yeah, okay, is that quite the answer? But maybe you better said, what is your idea when it's all over? What are you gearing for when it's all over? Here we are, 28. Okay, what's it going to look like?
You mean when all the sites are closed and?
Exactly, when we don't have any.
When ecology no longer has any sites to, to regulate anymore, it is really under the management of DOE. Is, is that what you mean, once all the sites are closed and ecology no longer has anything?
Well, I think you're talking about responsibilities, and I'm talking about the big picture, you know, the risk. The area, are we going to be able to turn much of it over to the tribes? Are we going to be able to use it for cleanup, clean energy? Or what are we going to be doing? You know, it seems like we're, we're not focused on the end game. We're focused on this intermediate game where, and granted, it's litigious and very difficult, but, and we have to have it before we get to the end game, but I really wish we had more ideas that how we want to leave the site in the end.
So, I don't mean to jump in here, Rob, but I do believe that comprehensive land use plan and long-term stewardship was something that was requested for FY '25. And so that my hope is that we can bring in Brian Harkins and he can talk more to that. So this might not be the right venue to talk to that and to answer those questions for you, but DOE is committed to bringing Brian Harkins in to have that conversation.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just mention with regard to the Hanford site-wide permit and the responsibilities of the Hanford site-wide permit, we expect each of the unit groups to be clean-closed. When they cannot be clean-closed, the DWE demonstrates to us why it cannot be clean-closed. We have a conversation in there. But that is our expectation for our permits is that they be clean-closed. I just wanted to add that.
Thanks.
Tom, two questions online, Larry, and then Mia. Tom?
Thanks for the information. I think I volunteered to curtail the cats for a work group for this, as like a giant IMT type of thing. So just wanted to, expectation set there. Are we going to get a response to advice 262 before the public comment period starts so we can really not reconsider the same stuff that we considered, that have considered in 2012?
Right, I'm working with Annette on that, because like she said, there's still some comments that are being responded to and stuff, which could include some of the have comments, but I'm working more closely on that if it's possible. I'd love to get out the advice response as soon as we can. If not, it will 100% go out the day the comment period starts, but trying my best to get it out earlier if possible. So I don't have a solid answer right now, because there's some things.
And then I'm hearing potential subgroups from this work task force of the SST U V plan that they had to look at, and maybe sort of the different telescoping, long-term stewardship associated with this permit. Because each site, as the landfill closes, it's going to have its own long-term stewardship plan that has to nest into the big one, which, you know, the site's long-term stewardship is transferring to LM sometime in the distant future. So, yeah, there's different scales and different, means different things to different people. So that might be a good thing to highlight.
And we'll have that discussion at the end of the day.
In addition, yeah.
But we've got, on the next steps at the end of the day.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm, I'm taking notes for what we want to.
And we have Rose online. What's your question?
Yeah, thank you. So I have a couple of concerns here. First of all, this idea of what long-term stewardship is, is huge. We've been talking about this for a long time with Department of Energy. We've had meetings about this with, with Department of Energy. And we have spoken about it a lot in the state tribal government working group meetings with the, both the EM1s and the EM2s. At a very high level, this definition of what long-term stewardship is still tends to be up in the air. I appreciate the fact that Brian Hark, you want to have Brian Harkins come in and speak to that, but the reality of it is, is that we really haven't come to any real conclusions. We've written, the, the STIGWIG group wrote a closure for the seventh generation report. We addressed some issues in there. Some of those issues are with regards to long-term stewardship. But as far as really sitting down and really having a solid definition of really, of what long-term stewardship is going to encompass and what it means, I don't feel we're there yet. And, and like I said, we've had these discussions at very high levels, and we can't seem to, and I'm speaking even like complex wide. I'm not just talking about Hanford. I'm talking about the whole, you know, complex of, EM complex, I should say. You know, what are we really looking for in long-term stewardship? And I will point you right now that some of the discussions that we've had, tribes all across the country are not happy with DO, with some of the things that DOE has kind of thrown out there as far as the definition. So I feel like we've got a lot of work that's left to do with regards to really having a solid definition that folks can get on board with, with regards to long-term stewardship. So I really wanted to put that out there for folks to consider. It's fine to be able to have the conversation. We need to continue to have conversations. But these conversations are, are being had at much higher levels than this group, and we're still not there yet. So I really would like people to keep that in mind, even if we do have a presentation later down the road on this topic. I, I don't think we're there yet, and we're still working on it. And I think it's important that people in this group realize that. And it's a big gaping hole, in my opinion, when we're looking at some of this other work that we're doing. Where do the tribes fit in? What, what are we going to do later? And anyway, I just, I, I wanted to make that point for people because they truly do understand where we are with this topic. Thanks.
Matt and Larry. Matt?
My question's more of an administrative question. Even if I was there today, unfortunately, I couldn't swing it. Even if I was there, I'd have a hard time choosing which subcommittee or breakout group to go and play in. What kind of notes will be taken from all these committees? I mean, how robust will those be? Because I'll be interested in seeing just about everything, and I know you're just one person, Josh, so.
Well, our initial plan for the meeting, Annette, was to kind of talk about the format more so than the content. The content that they'll be discussing is in the breakout session slides, which I will be linking for those online, and those will be linked.
And Matt, for those that are attending online that can't attend the breakout sessions here in person, if you guys have any questions on the unit groups on the slides that Josh is going to be sharing the link to, you guys are more than free to send an email or give me a call to our hanfordecy.wa.gov email. We're more than happy to follow up with and try and answer guys' questions outside of the, the meeting today. I, we know it's not ideal that we, that we're not able to, to do virtual breakout rooms and in-person ones, but that's something we're going to be looking at, you know, if we can do in the future. But hopefully that helps at least, that way we can try and answer questions if folks that can't attend that are online have still questions that we can answer.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you both.
Josh, are those slides linked yet?
Yes, I just put them in chat for those online. We have Larry and then Mia.
So I'd like a little more clarification, if you can provide it with the permit portion, portions within unit groups. You have it on page 14. It seems to me that, that most of these items would be executed by DOE and the contractors, except for maybe, you guys will do appendices and attachments. And I'd like to have you comment on, on your involvement after the paperwork is done, and especially on, on this area of inspections. Are there, are there routine inspections scheduled? And, and is it a combined effort of DOE and ecology? Or what's the, what's the format there? Is there, is there something that's been in, in usage for a long time that would apply to this?
So for your first question, you talked about the portions of the permit, and I just want to make sure I understand your question. You said that DWE would be responsible for, for the requirements in, within those portions, and that's correct. So anytime anything changes within those portions, DWE would provide a permit modification. You know, this is after issuance, DWE would provide a permit modification to let us know what's changed in the facility or site.
So DOE would, would actually propose, write the, the fact sheet and execute most of this by, as, as a unit?
So the fact sheet and permit conditions are written by ecology.
Okay.
Those are ecology's, we share those with the permities to make sure, you know, that's part of our sharing information with DOE. And so we want to make sure everything is accurate. And then the Part A through, you know, all the, all the portions, I'll follow them. Yes, we, I mean, DOE is responsible for those portions. And then if anything changes in the facility or site, then, then they would submit a permit modification.
Has this changed since revision, or eight?
No, it's all the same. Yep, they're all the same.
And then, then the issue of inspections, is that a routine thing?
The issue, inspections are done on a schedule. So there's this inspection schedule that the permities are responsible for. And so they keep an inspection log in which, when compliance goes on and does their inspections, they look at it to see if the permities have inspected their facility or site on their schedule.
Teresa, did you have anything to add to inspection stuff?
You know, I would just say that, you know, right now, the ecology inspectors inspect to inter-status standards. And so, you know, once the renewal is in place, then, then that will also change.
Thank you.
Mia?
Thank you, Annette, for the presentation. You mentioned that you are in the final stages of completing Rev Nine A. Can you give us a timeframe for when you expect it to come out? Is it going to be before the end of the year? I mean, it can be relatively vague, but kind of when, when do we can expect it?
We really want it to go out in 2024. We have, we're over half complete in our units, meaning those unit groups are locked down in our permit management system. And so, you know, it's, it's difficult to say how long it's going to take. Some of our unit groups are really close. So I could even say we're three quarters of the way, but we're finishing up some of the work. And then some groups still have, you know, a considerable amount of work to do. It just takes a long time to prepare the 52 unit groups. And we want to make sure we respond to all the comments. We write the fact sheets to reflect, you know, what's different since Rev Nine. And so it, it just takes a while. We have already created the external website. I've, I've seen a picture of it. It's, it's huge. That shows all the unit groups. And then once you link in the unit groups, you see all the portions within the permit, all the, all the addenda and the engineering drawings and, or attachments, what, you know, whether it's appropriate. So, you know, we're trying very hard to go out in 2024, but I know that Ryan will keep you informed as far as our progress. And, you know, as soon as we get just closer, well, you know, I think we'll be able to provide a public comment period date, and, and I know Ryan will provide that to you. So today, we just really wanted to provide you with as much information as we could while we're still in workshops. And so we really could provide you information on what's different other than, you know, this is what our permit is going to look like.
Thank you. My other question is, how does the, the proposed changes in the holistic settlement agreement interface with Rev Nine? Are those going to show up at all, or is that in the next iteration of the permit?
So I'm going to give you my best answer, and I'm going to look over here and ask folks to help me out. My experience with the permit and past TPA changes or consent decree changes, are we wait for those to become final? And then we find the timing to add it into the permit through a permit modification. So if the unit groups are in 8C, I would imagine it would probably go in 8C. Whether they would go in the renewal, it just depends on the timing of that final decision. So Teresa, did I answer that correctly? That's my experience.
I think that's exactly right. You, so an example that I would give is there are the, the closure dates for the SSTs, and that's, you know, the change package that includes 20-something milestones, I think. And that would, the timing piece is what Annette's referring to, so how those two interface with each other.
What about completely new facilities?
So I believe completely new facilities would have to go through a, a permit modification process down the road.
And it would be included in Rev 8C. So, I mean, it wouldn't be in the renewal. It would probably be in 8C before it would be in the renewal. So there will be some merging of 8C, well, not some, there'll be a lot of merging between 8C and 9A when we, when we issue a final. You know, just a little bit of information here. We had to lock down files for unit groups at some point. We had to lock them down. And so permit modifications continue. And so we're going to provide you with as much information as we can to show, you know, hey, WTP, you know, we locked down WTP, which takes a lot to do. And these permit modifications, there's the links to them, and this is what changed in WTP since we locked down those files. We're trying to provide as much information as we can so you get the whole picture. So I know I'm providing a lot of nerdy detail. Sorry, Ryan, I promised I wouldn't. But I just wanted to, just to explain that to you so you're aware that there's always things changing in the permit. Like you said, with the, with the holistic negotiations, there's always things changing. So there'll be some merging at that some point. Okay, thanks. So I'll be back.
Are there other questions in the room or online? That's even. All right, so we're pretty close to being on time. Our next step will be a break. And when we come back, we'll be splitting up into four breakout groups. One at each of these tables and rotate it between them.
Yes, so the, I think, like Annette covered, we're going to have four breakout sessions. And I'm just doing my slides to them. So we're going to break up into the four tables, as Josh said. So that back left table in the room is going to be breakout group one, which is the waste treatment plant and the, sorry. Waste treatment plant, IDIF, indirect feed flow activity waste. That top right table over there is going to be tank farms, so single shell tanks, double shell tanks, a 242A evaporator and the liquid effluent retention facility, effluent treatment facility. This bottom left table here in the room will be the solid waste operating complex for SWAC and corrective action. And then this bottom right table over here will be the fourth unit group, which was, I'm not going to go through the whole list, but that's the other central plateau river quarter unit groups that, that long list is on the slideshow. And then just to clarify too, is, is, you can pick whatever group you want. There should be time for us to do rotations through all of them, so we shouldn't be able to sound anything. So we're going to rotate and have, I think, four rotations. So you should be able to filter all of the groups. So I would, I would just encourage you to just try and distribute yourselves evenly as you can. That way, you know, there's, there's probably enough time for each section. That way, you know, there's probably enough time for each section. It's a break so that it's supposed to be evenly amongst the tables. Chris?
Ryan, are you going to kind of indicate times to switch?
Yes. Yeah, I think that's how I'll work on doing that.
Looking at that 20 minutes session.
Yes, I think we might, you might go and give like a notice when like the time's halfway up and then when you have five minutes left, if that's helpful.
As a note, those in the gallery aren't allowed to participate?
Yes, everybody participate.
For those online, because there are four individual conversations going on, we're going to be shutting down the recording and microphones. And we'll be turning that back on after lunch, which for the agenda is scheduled for 1:45. If that changes, I'll leave a note in chat. For that, thank you. We're going to take a break. We'll return at 10:30.
Yes, I can.
Okay. So I hope everyone had a great lunch and had time to reflect on what they learned today. We're going to be launching into a discussion where we sort of talk about that, what you learned, what you found important, what you'd like to learn more about. And based on what you learned, what possibilities do you see for potential future have device? Who has some dots they'd like to leave us off with?
How's the problem? It's looking at all of the in the breakout groups, the slides. I had no idea there was this many things that were covered under the, under the permit. This many facilities and what you call groups there. I had no idea there were that many things that were covered.
Yeah, I agree with Rob. I was surprised by, and I know there, we get kind of trapped in certain areas. And that seems to be a big part of the conversation, which are usually important items. But yeah, there's so much more going on that I thought, oh, yeah, yeah, this is still there. Oh, yeah. So it was very enlightening and I really appreciated the opportunity to move around and talk a little more intimately, you know, one on one. That really went a long way. And because they were smaller groups, I felt like voices back first. Where a lot of times people are sitting on quiet.
It was really great to just have the SMEs at the table and be able to have a conversation without a PowerPoint deck. So nice work. Format worked out really well. One thing we talked about during lunches, each different group, as they rotated, got a little bit of a different experience. And some had more pregnant pauses than others. So it might be good to have sort of a facilitator at each table. If we're going to do it again, just to make sure the conversation keeps going.
There was a pregnant pause at your table.
No, my table, no.
I think another thing about kind of moving around like that, that the SMEs also got quite a few different perspectives and were able to provide more information as they as they went on. Because they picked out, you know, questions from this group here, questions from this other group were different. So they were able to provide a little bit more feedback.
What I thought was really interesting was in breakout group number two, the individual man who was the lead there said that if the unit group had a closure plan, then DOE was required within 180 days after issuance of permit to meet the closure plan, closure, to meet, complete the closure plan within the 180 days. Unless the permit had specific dates that extended beyond 180 days. That was
Yeah, I was going to bring that up too. That was new knowledge.
Yeah. And I think that's important. And the closure plan does not have milestones in it. So in our work priorities advice the last two years, when we've tried to link milestones in our advice to say, look, this has to be a priority by this date because there's this milestone that meets it. It turns out a lot of very important activities that are in the permit don't have milestones with them, yet have specific closure dates within 180 days. So to really get what's important, the same work priorities, we almost need to look at every closure plan to see if it has a date in it that's not reflected in a milestone anywhere.
It's right to assume that they can't perform any work until the closure plan's approved. Right? But yet the closure plan is always under modification. They're always adding, always changing. It seems like, you know, I compared this, I compared this to a process they evolved about three years ago called the plug and play process, where they tied together a number of waste sites and did not designate them all as a unit group, but gave an undetermined number of components to a unit group in order to do the plug and play, which cut down on a lot of paperwork, cut down on having to do permit modifications on, you know, picking up pipe that was buried from here to there or whatever, some of those smaller, many of them are less than $3 or $4 million of the projects they had for their cleanup. So I think we need to take back into consideration that they can't really work on a project unless we get approved. Well, and permitted. And so what's the rate limiting step? Is it, I guess it's time. But, you know, it seems like we would waste a lot of time from accomplishing our mission, our mission cleanup, is if we could figure out a way of streamlining any of these activities. The second thing I got to say is that for many years on the board, you know, some of the more technical people didn't have a lot of confidence in ecology from the standpoint of the technical knowledge and understanding what exactly is being done at the site. Partially that was because they were way understaffed in the 2004, 2005, 2006, 2003, way understaffed. Today, though, I like the format. I feel more confident that we really have a handle on what's going on. I, you know, the one-to-one contact with ecology folks and their professionalism and their willingness to answer and participate and even say, I don't know. And it's a lot different than what we had with holistic negotiations says we can't talk about it because that vacuum gets filled with rumors and conspiracies and things of that sort. And saying they don't know, but, you know, they understand our perspective. It was real positive, especially in the, you know, when we talked about the evaporator and some of the activities that's being done, how it's going to be commissioned again coming up. It was, I think it was real beneficial. It really was. I think the professionalism in ecology is pretty high right now. And I hope you're staffed to the level that you need because there's a lot of paperwork to be written to get all this done. And you can't use AI for this stuff. It's got to be, it's got to be human. So anyway, that's kind of my conclusion. I really like the format. To what, from what I learned today, what's important to my constituency? Well, when I talk to the board again, I mean, my city council, I will mention that we tried this new approach and it seems successful. I think we, I guess, no, I share with what Chris says is a lot of these things don't have milestones or timetables attached to them. And I feel that I wish it wasn't so wussy wussy. And you've got my comments. I think this is success. Bravo, Lindsey.
Ryan.
And Ryan. And Josh, and the rest of the folks here. Thanks.
In regards to content, was there anything else? Anyone thoughts stood out interesting that they didn't know before, along those lines?
Well, I learned a lot at each group. I think it was a great format. So great job. And thank you for getting all the staff here. It was really great to meet some new ecology folks I hadn't interacted with before. My only suggestion would be maybe at each table, if there was a little bit of framing around like what is new in the permit for this, for these different operating? I know there's a lot of groups, so maybe just some top highlights to get the conversation going, rather than just kind of waiting for board members to ask questions because there's a lot to ask about. So that was just one suggestion, maybe just a little bit of framing of new aspects, updates to the permit that are of interest. But yeah, I thought it was really well done to be able to have those little intimate conversations with different board members too. Like we kind of mixed it up. And I see definitely that there's some follow-up we can do, especially around the closing unit groups that you were talking about, Chris. It seems like we could dig into, once the permit is out there, we could look at those dates to closure and give some feedback from the board on all these different closure activities that will be part of the permit. So, because I'm sure there'll be conversations with DOE about whether that's possible, right? To close within 180 days. And there's going to be further negotiations about that, but
On many of these things, I don't see how
I don't know how you're going to do like, you know, 20 different closing unit groups in 180 days. But maybe there's a conversation about which ones are highest priority.
Unless they're already on the shelf waiting to go and they just need to get signed and put in.
And that's, and that's possible. Right. So it'd be great to get that outlined a little bit, you know, down the road here, like which are the ones that are ready to go, which are the ones that need more work? So that was the biggest thing that I thought I got from that particular work group. It was an interesting discussion. And we learned about railroad trenches and a very unique way of disposing of waste. So that was fun.
I'll say that Teresa and Eddie were awesome at explaining the concept of a corrective action list versus a cleanup. And, you know, when, when the trigger is that stuff goes from just a cleanup and a spill response to a corrective action and how nobody wants that. It's good to know that that, you know, that that list is there and it's empty, which is good.
One of the things that would be interesting to get some online feedback on, Ryan, was if they get X, if X number of thousand comments are submitted again and you're committing to write responses to all those things, then resolve them with DOE, have the permit writers integrate them into the permit as applicable. It'd be nice to get some ongoing, say, comments from you on, are we going to meet that 2026 date? Or we've got 7,200, we've responded to 1,500 and it's only taken us six months? You know, something like that would be nice to get, to see where we are once, once comments get finalized and, you know, from the public comment period.
Yeah.
That's where I
During lunch, the 2026 came up. We were wondering, is it calendar fiscal December 31st? Sometime during 2026?
I think I heard that say by the end of 2026, we could follow up. But I would hazard a guess and say that's by the end of calendar 2026 is my guess. I can
Yeah, we were kind of guessing too. So we were just curious that it could, you know, because that kind of drives a lot of the schedule. I mean, if you guys are going to lose, I mean, the four months for public comment and then resolution of public comment, refinement of the permit and then approval and everything. It's just like, we're just anxiously waiting.
Yeah, not much time.
Time flies.
Does your organizational structure have, each one of these is a separate entity, a group? Or are they coordinated, broken down into a different category where you have a lead and then
Right, yeah.
The other folks do the work and then leads got to review it?
Yeah, yeah, I saw a little bit of it today where we have permit riders, like project managers for different unit groups. Some, like John Temple, for example, he's lead on like the 324 dangerous waste management units. You know, Wes Sitz, some other ones. So we have some staff that are lead over multiple unit groups. And some of the unit groups are so big it's just one. And so we have a combination of like project managers and permit leads for the permit riders.
So then there's some continuity there.
Yeah, but our staff's broken up. We have a number of different sections in the office. I have a tank waste treatment section, a cleanup section, waste management section. And each section is made up of the different staff that support it. And we have like permit riders for different subjects and project managers. Short answer is, yeah, they're divvied up in each different stack.
Each one of those groups would have their own separate permit riders. They wouldn't be sharing.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, short answer, yeah. We're divvied up.
Yeah.
There is a, one other thing that I learned here that I never really thought about too much. Talked about transuranic waste. And the group that's over here, we're talking about one of the facilities where they have a bunch of containers of the transuranic waste and they're sitting there getting, and some of them are getting shipped to WHIP. And I guess when I, when I thought that, I was thinking, do they have chunks that spent fuel in there? What do they have there? And most of the stuff that they have in there is like PPE and hard hats and stuff that may have a little speck of transuranic waste that they have to consider the whole thing, transuranic. So most of this stuff is just trash, which is kind of interesting.
Where did you hear that? Because I think that's serious.
One of the folks in this table here saying a lot of the containers there
You don't have, you know, I mean, you don't have debris that leaks liquid with plutonium on the floor of central waste complex. And in our discussion at this table, we talked about how much of that waste has never been characterized. And a lot of it is, you know, the remote handled transuranic wastes that are outdoors where the wastes that were shipped from Ohio and California to, with the agreement of Washington State, which then changed its mind because the waste was orphaned here. But that is not debris. There's
Maybe I misunderstood, but that's the estimate about containers.
A lot of the containers were marked as debris, including the one that leaked liquid with plutonium all over the floor. And one of the findings of the inspection reports is that this waste has never been characterized and that a lot of it was just marked as debris, but it's not at all. And assays of it show liquids.
But transuranic waste can include PPE and dirty equipment and stuff like that. It's not all of it is, but some of it is.
So I'll follow up with Kelly Eber as well and get some more information.
Okay, good, yeah. They did talk about containers that had not been categorized yet. But I guess maybe he was talking about stuff that they did that was characterized and a lot of those was just miscellaneous trash and stuff. Maybe there's a distinction there that I got mixed up.
Well, I heard the same thing. I just don't know that we, we pointed out when Jerry, there's uncharacterized waste. How much of it did you guys ever get to? Is it 10% of it? Is it 20%? But there's quite a bit that is characterized.
Maybe that's another good question. Yeah, maybe that's another good question.
I mean, I'm curious, did you get any sense of how much?
No, I didn't.
Jerry, did you?
Curious what was in there.
There are thousands of containers. I think, and I missed this.
It was Eddie.
Eddie said just a very large, or large number have not been characterized ever. And you've had the inspection reports include photographs of barrels corroding. You don't get that from solid debris. Liquids are not supposed to be present, but they are. And.
I guess maybe he was talking specifically about containers that had been already character.
We have a guide to CWC on our website that I can forward to you. It was some of the pictures.
There's definitely a backlog of characterization to do, and they're working through it, but slowly.
Sounds like something that might be called up. And a similar note, from what we learned today, or looking forward to the final or the draft permit later in 2024, is there anything else you'd all be interested in learning more about?
Well, yes, but not specifically to the permit. This came out of a conversation of the table in that corner. People who've been on the half wall might remember that two years ago, we issued an advice on tank leak response plan. And among, one of the key issues, one of the key things in that advice was that DOE write a plan, detailed plan, on how they're going to respond to tank leaks. They, and ecology subsequently or at the same time required DOE to issue a tank leak response plan, which they did in August 27th last year. Ecology wasn't very happy with it. And they had a lot of reservations and concerns with it. And Jerry, I think, I think your organization did, too. But what I learned today is that Jay Decker in that table has the lead and has been negotiating with DOE on revisions to that tank leak response plan. So, that would be a good thing, maybe to follow up with Jay as to how that's coming.
Another thing that's tangentially related to the permit would be, you know, we had a quest a couple of years back to talk about the different monitoring regimes on the site. So, we've got RECA monitoring, we've got CIRCLIF monitoring, we've got AEA monitoring. So, how do, how do they all fit together? And who develops the plans for each one of these three different? And there's also site-wide, you know, monitoring. And Department of Health has monitored stuff. So, just figuring out how all these pieces fit together. And we heard that the 324 building, for instance, they're going to be doing clean closure of the storage units, but they have to wait for the CIRCLIF cleanup to finish cleaning it before they can do clean closure. They're relying on the CIRCLIF cleanup to close RECA clean as opposed to doing a RECA cleanup. So, just how all that fits together is, and I know we've had high-level 101s on RECA versus CIRCLIF, but maybe when we get into some details, we can, you know, figure out what it all means.
I can offer a little insight on that because the group I managed when I was working was heavily involved with that. And you have sampling and analysis plans, on groundwater, that is, for groundwater that's covered by CIRCLIF, CIRCLIF operable units. Then you have a separate series of groundwater monitoring plans for groundwater that's covered by RECA and RECA recreations. And you have a third set of groundwater monitoring plans that's covered by the Atomic Energy Act, AEA. Now, when you go out and sample, we develop the sampling schedule for each well, number of analyses, so that all requirements and all those plans can be met. And if you had a well that was, say, in a RECA groundwater unit and also a CIRCLIF groundwater unit, if there were, if there are analyses in common or contaminants concerned in common, say hexavalent chromium, you had sampled that well and you had sampled at an interval so that you could satisfy both CIRCLIF requirements and RECA groundwater monitoring requirements. You didn't have to sample separately for RECA, separately for CIRCLIF. You sample once for both, as long as you're compliant with the SAPS. But when that data goes in heist and you get the data out of the, out of the, heist is the environmental site-wide database at Hanford. When you get that data out of a heist, as long as it's in there, you can use it for RECA purposes or you can use it for CIRCLIF purposes. We saved about 40% of the cost every year in groundwater monitoring analysis by, by sampling at times where you can satisfy both RECA, CIRCLIF, or CIRCLIF and AEA requirements. It gets a fairly sophisticated sampling program, but ultimately, we save the site about 40% a year in cost by not having to sample multiple times for the same analyte. And the group that develops the sampling analysis plans, I think, I don't know what it's called now. It was a file and groundwater division under CHPRC. That group has been split out from operations group and is now under Mark Jewett under CPC Co. They do all the decision documents. The samplers and the group that handles all the analytical and data is in the operations group under CPC Co. But they're still in the same building and they still interact. Those are the two groups that handle all the monitoring, sampling and analysis requirements.
Are you suggesting that we are different than that? That we're doing it manually, so to speak? Separate?
Pardon?
Are you suggesting that we could gain those kind of advantages here? We're not using those practices?
No, we do that.
We're using those practices now?
Yes.
Here on our site.
This side of the table's been pretty quiet. What about you guys?
I'm avoiding for me. No, the question of what do we want to learn more about? Is that a broader question? I guess what we're headed is, is what I'm hearing from my side of the river down there is these trains that are going to be hauling liquid waste down through there, right? And I'm trying to get a grasp on that's not what anybody wants, right? The ecology folks.
We almost choked on that.
What's that?
I said the rest of us almost choked on that.
Yeah. So, and maybe it's something everybody's completely at the speed of, but I'm sure that I get up to speed on it, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, but this pertains to what we want to learn more about to this, or regarding the site-wide permit, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the understanding is that the calls for that permit will be coming out later in 2024. Because that to do with a lot of information can't possibly cover everything you might be interested in. And can I understand what gaps may need to be filled between now and then?
Was anybody else hear about 324 in terms of the encapsulation? If they're going to knock down the building to help make sure that the envelope is secured for ready to be glad it's getting out and so forth.
Still, still waiting on the focus feasibility study, right?
Right.
We're hoping to bring a briefing to the car in October. You heard it pretty first.
But yes.
Any other thoughts on that?
Well, I, as far as transferring railroad trains through Oregon, I really don't see that as possible.
That's, that's holistics, not permit. Let's table that for now.
Permit-related. Any more permit stuff?
I thought it was interesting to hear how the permit is going to get adopted and already be wrong and have to reconcile with 8C and 9A and decisions that have been made while the permit's being written that then have to go back in and get modified. And it's a lumbering beast, but it's.
It's the cutoff date.
Right, the cutoff date. So, so all of the holistic stuff, once it's decided, is going to automatically make the permit wrong, have to get updated, incorporate all this new stuff. And it's like, oh, man, you guys are never going to get a break.
It's a living document.
Yeah. But it's, but it's more than a living document. It's, it's like a, some kind of amoeba. A giant amoeba.
Ryan, how is the permit going to be organized? Is it going to be organized, they have a bunch of volumes of operating unit groups, then a couple on corrective action, then those on 34 unit, closing unit groups and the post-closure groups? So, it's going to be lumped together like that?
Yeah, I'm actually pulling up. We've had the next question and I can come back and answer it, but I'm actually going to pull up the current, current permit website for Rev 8C and you can see how that's organized and they'll be organized pretty similarly. Just like you can visually see it. So, so give me just like a couple of minutes while I pull that up.
I was just a table of contents.
Other areas of interest in the meantime?
Yeah, I think we could do this all over again and I would learn new things in the other hour of like breakout rooms, breakout sessions. But I agree with what Steve said about like we hone in on like specific topics a lot and then you do this and you're like, whoa, I've never heard that there are other landfills, trenches of 31 and 34 that are lined and have leachate collection systems and store waste and it's going to be there, like that's a disposal site. Annoying. So, like, we could do this all over again. I'd learn, I'd still keep learning. I mean, it's 20,000 pages. One hour is like not, not even scratching the surface. So, I don't know what I don't know, I guess is what I'm trying to say, until like I'm already in it and someone's telling me about it. And Ryan, I just want to say thank you because all of your SMEs are so knowledgeable and so did such a great job of explaining things and answering questions. And so, it's great, really great session.
I think it would be fun, because I'm a geek, to anytime we have a brief on a topic, have the SME permit writer from ecology also in the room as to do ecology's response. I know that, so that would be a ridiculously heavy lift, probably impossible. But, you know, if we had that level of agency response to the brief, that would, you know, provide some insight.
All right, well, real quick, just to circle back on our permitting webpage, see all of our permits. And I'm currently on Rev 8C. But if you scroll down, you'll see that we've got it organized, you know, the introduction, that kind of stuff. There's some of the attachments. So, again, this is the current 8C. And we go to parts one and twos, but then, and then parts threes is the units in certain conditions. So, you kind of separate the markers. You kind of see the rough structure.
Chris.
And then also, we do have Rev 9, not Rev 9A, but you have, we have Rev 9 that went out in 2012 that's available for review, too. So, yeah, this is the 2012 one that went out. So, if you want to do a little bit of homework and see if the last couple iterations you can go in. Yeah, some light reading.
So, format-wise, the Department of Health, the Committee of the Hole, which we did the budget simulation last fall, was interactive. Today, ecology hosted this one, which was very interactive. As a whole, do you guys like that type of format for the Committee of the Holes? Do you like the smaller breakout groups?
Like that format for everything.
Yeah.
Death by PowerPoint is not fun.
Okay.
Can I offer, you know, it would be beneficial to have a Teams or Zoom room that had a breakout and people could participate and observe remotely for each breakout table, which really wouldn't be that hard. Much appreciated to expand the scope of participation.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, too. I know it takes a little bit of facilitation. You can create those little breakout rooms and people can discuss in those. But it would be, I guess you'd have to have ecology folks also.
Yeah, so we would be there, probably.
So, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking at that and we have to separate them into four actual rooms because we don't try to have people in the same room and audio is an issue. Yeah, no, it's.
Oh, right, right.
So, it's just other series. But something that I think we're definitely looking into.
Or we could even do that as if we wanted to do a full remote meeting. You could set up those breakout rooms.
Oh, yeah, if it was fully remote, it'd be really easy. And it's not impossible for hybrid, it's just a lot tougher. But it's something, something that's, yeah. Yeah, taking it back and receive message, just.
Well, and this was different than the budget simulation because that was, every table was doing the same, basically the same thing.
Right.
Whereas here, we were moving around different topics. So, it's kind of, yeah.
Did you have a remote? I didn't participate in that one, is there?
No, we didn't do a remote on that one.
But you could have done on that one, just with somebody facilitating a remote.
In hindsight, yeah.
It would have been a challenge because there were like injects and stuff like that, but.
Oh, I see, kind of like a, a lot of.
It was role-playing, yeah.
Pieces of a game.
Yeah.
Puzzle, okay.
Right, really. All right. So, when the draft permit comes out, so they put the comment period, imagining that you were to give a comment just based on the information provided to, right today, what do you think that would be?
TBD.
Or what would you lean towards that being?
I, I really liked the one features and the kind of clear English. Some of the acronyms, I gotta go back and look, but. This is, this, this was very easy to manage, very easy to use.
It's, yeah, it's definitely an example of good public outreach. But it's, I, that's on the outreach process, not on the permit, so.
I guess if I were going to offer a comment today as opposed to waiting for the actual comment period, it would be, how is ecology going out to the public and try and convey the mass of this information in a manner that would elicit really good public comments back? Because this hour we spent today, as Mia said, there's so much material, we don't know what we don't know. And if you go out to the public with a similar hour, hour and a half, there's so much that they don't know that they don't know that you could miss an awful lot of potential comments that could be really good.
I think you have to pay attention to what you get as opposed to what you miss. You go around, you're ever thinking about what you missed. All you can do is best, give the best example of what you know and try to go with that and build on it.
And at 3 o'clock on this, on the agenda is public outreach plans, what Ryan's gonna plan, is planning to do right now.
Right, so some really good feedbacks so far. We got this whole lot of fun PI outreach stuff until the next break. But I think Josh was talking specifically about what kind of general maybe comments or themes or ideas about the, you know, permit itself versus like the outreach for the permit you might be doodling about after the morning session. And following understanding, at the big least, if you're still formulating your comments, then.
So, almost in every group, when I'd ask a question, occasionally, I'd get the answer, well, we don't know yet, or it's not decided yet, or we're, we're in discussion with Department of Energy. And so, the, I guess the question in my mind is, how does that stuff become public when, when it's finished? Is it something that'll come to us? Or is it something that'll go to the public for discussion? I assume that it's not going to be done by the time this document is finished. I wish I could state an example for it. I mean, you know, it's one group of DOE workers having to do something before this other thing can be, be finished. And, and delays are going to happen and you've got to coordinate with other people. But I'm just wondering about the communications part of it, Ryan.
Yeah, great, great feedback again. And I'll just encourage folks kindly to, we do have a session dedicated after the break to PI communications and love to talk about it.
Okay, that's right.
I tried to defer the answer, I will get to it, that she's trying to stay on topic.
Okay.
Comments on the hypothetical permit?
I think possibly the Seafarm closure plan that was. I think possibly the Seafarm closure plan that was, that was shared in our group, that it would be complete. But they expected it to be complete for the, for the permit renewal.
And that the weird determination was just about finalized.
Right.
And I actually can't speak partially to your question, Larry. The part that kind of attributes this, this conversation is, is today that there, and as I shared, there's a lot of things that we're still in. Some workshops finishing locking some stuff down. And so, you know, what we brought today was kind of, you know, current status of things. Yeah, obviously, yeah, the other unit groups still have to get locked down and, and it's up to finalize the permit and stuff. So that, that's all stuff that will be finalized and gelled up here.
Well, we didn't hear the full 19,000 pages today. It was a little short.
Insouciant, Ryan.
Yeah.
Any other potential comments?
Just, yes, permit. Just. I actually kind of want to tap that tank, but I just have to, not permit, so.
I have a whole lot of comments at this time. Tom, as a founder of the IM team, for potential comments on Rev 9, do you see a path forward or a need to meet to get working on any comments?
So I would say, what I'd like to see us do, and this is not an IM team, this is a task force work group, something bigger than IM team. So in a perfect world, I could see us having 12 people on the IM team and breaking up into groups of three or so to tackle tanks, DF law, tank leaks, long-term stewardship, and just sort of having these mini group meetings, not even meetings, but just sort of throwing documents across the wall and email exchanges. So we don't need to have, undubert on our DDFO and having to be at every IM team and sub IM team call. So we could do it all by email. But right now, if you have something that you're interested in and you want to say, I want to be involved in the big group and maybe even spearhead the DF log group, that would be set in the framework. So when the document drops, we're ready to, you know, start attacking it. Because even 120 days is not going to be very long for 20,000 pages. And having to get through committee and through the full board. So, something to think about. And I think that's, that's, if I was going to frame next steps, that would be the one for the work group. And that's to volunteer and say, I want to work on, these are the topics I'm interested in. And then if, if we get an organic breakout of people who are interested in different topics, then that's easy. And if not, we can, you know, figure out who arm wrestle, who gets what.
I think you'd need to be pretty careful about that. Because it's hard to say exactly where comments about the permit ends and say, the scope of other IM teams begin without a lot of overlap. And you mentioned DF law. So Rob currently has two IM teams dealing with three aspects of DF law. But some of those aspects are also the permit. So where, where do you have overlap here with people spending a lot of time? And I think, I don't disagree with you, I just think you have to be very careful about where something ends and where an existing IM team begins.
And that would be sort of, the, the goal of the IM team is anytime you come up with an idea, make sure it feeds back to the permit. And if other people from other IM teams want to join this and say, hey, the other IM team is working on this and look, there's the permit and we can put this paragraph into this advice. You know, that is a pre-written paragraph that we can just toss in. And that, this is the right venue for it, right? But yeah, there's definitely scope potential in anything we do related to this 20,000 pages of words.
I have just maybe a random question for you guys to think about, because I know how big it is. Because we're trying to come up with all this stuff, but when you look at potential advice, does the HAB want to do advice on the whole permit? Kind of like you guys did 2012, knowing how much, how much of a pull that was and the resources you have? Or do you want to try and narrow the focus on things the HAB finds the most important? Or, you know, looking at your last advice, just putting that question out there.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine that we're going to have the level of engagement and time to commit that we did in 2012. It'd be good to know what has happened as a result of that point, the response to 262. And it'd be good to know whether the documents that are included in the permit, such as the tank leak response plan or spill response plan and the closure plans, whether those are in scope for the comments or whether those are just included as reference. I'm hoping they're in scope for comments, but I just want to make sure that's clear. Because that could put a lot off of our plate if it's not in scope. But if, if all of these subgroups all come back with similar paragraphs, then yeah, it could end up being a global comment on the permit.
One of the things that hasn't been mentioned, and maybe each breakout group heard this. I just heard that one breakout group, is on these permit portions within the unit groups, ones that are listed here, each of these, as applicable, has all the Washington Administrative Codes referenced and explained in each of these items. So where there's a Washington Administrative Code requirement, or say, an operating group or a closure group, under each of these, the WAC, the WAC portions of that code would be, would be listed in the permit. Is that your understanding, Ryan?
I think. I think I tracked you, yeah. I think so. And like, and I said to, since you're on that slide, yeah. Most if not all of the, not all of it, most of the unit groups have all of those pieces for each one.
Yeah, so you don't have to go back and forth between the Washington Administration Code and, and the permit to see.
I don't know the relationship though between the milestones on what appendix C lists all the milestones and the various ownerships for each of those activities and to our unit group descriptions on our permit.
Sorry, you're asking for.
I mean, there should be, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm running, but there should be a relationship between our TPA milestones and authorities to, to work the milestone and the permit. Should we have, who's responsible for the timetable? Who's responsible for the milestone?
Yeah, well, we've got a lot of staff that deal with it, like our, our big lead on TPA specific stuff. So I can touch base with that for this and see how those are relating to sideways harnessing specifically.
You guys to see that. And milestone, you know, M236.
Right, yeah, the milestone if I relate to that word.
So Tom, since we don't have the permit, the draft permit yet, you're saying you'd like to get a group of HAB members to at least express interest in being involved and then kind of set up some subgroups that when the permit is published, then you're ready to go?
Yeah, so then we can say, all right, Rob's going to lead on DF law and, you know, I'll, I'll take this section and, you know. So then when people have questions, they, they have a, someone's going to commit to reading that section first. So they can be sort of a phone friend. I don't know if that'll work, but.
Well, and that probably ties into your next, the next topic.
You look, speak up, bud.
Oh, it might tie into the public involvement piece. Like if the HAB wants to be engaged in giving advice during that timeframe, you know, what's the best way to organize and be ready to go? It sounds like we should probably get organized, get ready to go, so that then when that 120 days starts, we're going to have it up. Because it takes us a while, right, to come up with, if we did end up wanting to get some advice back?
Yeah, I mean, it's got to, if, if I had to put a timeline on it, we got a month to read what we need to read and then a month to think about it. And that only gives us a month to pass it out of committee and.
Then another month to adopt.
Yeah.
So is that something you guys could pitch at the E-Board meeting in September?
I'll pitch it every chance I get.
Give you a soapbox and jump right in.
Best way to learn is to join an IM team.
Sounds like even if content isn't clear yet, there is interest in pursuing advice. There's an initial plan for how that advice development will be distributed. And Tom, would you like to volunteer to pitch that at the September 4 meeting?
I'll be remote, but I can do that. As long as Max isn't in the room. Cause he's still primary.
Until October 1.
Until October 1, so. As long as we can figure out a way to make that work.
We'll make it work.
Okay, because I think I might also be pitching advice, so.
Any other thoughts on this subject before we close it out?
Can we take names today? Is there any reason to wait?
No. And this, this seems like the most likely group to have energy about it today. So, yeah. And there's no, no pressure, right?
I'll join on response, surprise, surprise, and also central waste.
Josh, you can ask me.
I'm the work task force in general, or are you all here?
You're tracking all these, I don't need to.
And maybe it would be beneficial to put a note in HAB happenings for testing volunteers?
Yeah.
This would be a good thing to bring up at the various meetings tomorrow, I just do too. Elise, maybe members who aren't here.
I could do CARM and COE, but I'm not going to Lids or Tanks. So if someone is willing to pitch for me at Lids and Twist, that would be good. Because I'm not going to be here tomorrow for the morning.
So I may not have caught it, but the, what I heard for volunteers on the work group in general are Jerry, Mia, Chris, Rob, Larry, and yeah, both Robs.
Put me down for in general.
Anybody volunteering for a specific subgroup or area of interest? Is that your central waste complex for you?
And leak response.
I'm going to check the website first.
But he's going to want the leak response plan also.
Well, a lot of monitoring.
So a completely different subject. I have assembled a reading list for some of the stuff. I passed it out to a number of people in my group. And I'm just passing out the titles. I have copies of those. I know my band wasn't that big, but am I violating copyright laws if I email it to any members of our board, you know, up here?
Are you violating what?
Any copyright laws, any kind of, see, I, I'm a member of several academic societies. I get their technical papers. I have some that are sent into routing, to processing, and things of that sort. And I'm glad speaking. So if I, somebody says to me, say, I see this on the reading list, I can't get it. Is it possible that people, am I violating the law by sending it to them, emailing?
If it's copyrighted, it's going to say it right in the document. The restrictions usually.
Don't edit it and say it's yours.
You could usually.
There's usually an explanation if for some reason it's.
That's one way of getting around the copyright law.
If you can send your distributions through facilitation, that would be helpful.
You can usually, you can usually lend someone a copy of something.
Okay, so then everybody's on honor to send it back to you.
Or destroy it.
Okay, that's great. Because I've had a couple of people ask, well, I can't find this before, I can't find, like, Bates had some technical notes before finishing up the MRDC, which talked extensively about sweep crowds and things of that sort. And it can't really be found on the internet right now. So I have copies.
Yeah, the issue is if it's an article in a journal, unless you subscribe to the journal or the institution subscribes, then we wouldn't be able to download that article and maybe not even be able to read it. And that's the issue that you would run into. If you're able to get it, can you send it to me?
Yeah, that's right. That's what I, and I've been lucky in a couple of cases. But, you know, that's family. But anyway, my point is, is that if people don't mind receiving those from me, if they need them, then I would love to email it to you. Like Dr. Van, but he had it there.
More work group organization thoughts, other permit thoughts? I think we're clear to break for break.
Does anybody online want to join the IM team work group thing?
Haven't seen any comments. Matt's on the way.
This is Rose.
I know.
This is Rose. If you ask somebody online, I'm going to jump in really quick before you go on break. And that, if you can send me the information, I, I'm doing two jobs right now, so my schedule's very hectic. But if I can participate and attend, I will, if I know when it is. So if you could just kind of send me information, if I can be there, I will. I know that's not, that's not saying much, but I'm, it's the best I can do.
If nothing else, we'll put you on an interested parties list.
Thank you. I am an interested party.
We'll sign you up for everything, then you can pick and choose.
I, I for one look forward to the HAB happenings that have the list of all the different committees. That way we can spread ourselves appropriately.
Means I need to plan, okay.
At best, I think we are ready for you to go to break. We are rejoining, discussing public involvedness plans. There were a report overview during the morning overview presentation of Rev 9. Ryan, can you talk in a bit more detail about what those plans are right now?
All right, so actually, I think I'll keep it a little general again, because I really think we were going to have a roundtable to have discussion, questions, answers, just have a really good discussion about PI. Because as we've heard earlier from a lot of you, I think we all liked the discussion rather than death by Ryan speaking to you. So, but that being said, I thought we'd go over a few just things just for awareness. I shared this earlier today, that our lovely baseball cards, which you printed some of them today. We've done the draft on it, so they're still not final yet. So we're still working on tweaking them. We're going to obviously add all the other unit groups to it. You know, it's on the breakout sessions today, over in the group over there. One of the sessions was about like 216 kind of ponds and trenches. And we only had one baseball card in there, so for examples like that. And then like SWAC, there's only a couple of cards. We actually have baseball cards for all of those units and all of like the SWAC units. And just know that, that, that they will all have their own dedicated unit for all of the, basically all of the unit groups are going to have their own card. So that's just, I just want to clarify that, because we also just wanted to save some paper today. Also, because the unit groups already had, we wanted to try and be a little more strategic in our breakout sessions. So we want to focus, you know, get to into the weeds. But so we will have that for baseball cards. The baseball cards also, as I covered earlier today, there's this really cool, you can see it through Adobe or something else. But Dana is working online to make like an online version of it. So you can actually go on our webpage and like scroll through it and you can click back and forth to like the definitions and acronyms and to different unit groups. So, so we'll have like a nice interactive digital version. So we'll have like a nice interactive digital version of the baseball cards that you can interact with. And then, of course, we'll have just the overall ones you can print out and have. So that's one of the biggest things that we've got for some of our educational materials. But I did cover earlier today some of the different things that we're planning, including the specifically like informational public meetings and public hearings. I'll say right now, as we're continuing to plan and talk about it, I think we've got like 10 or 11 meetings that we're planning. And that there'll be various from in-person to online only to hybrid. But really looking for any potential feedback or questions about how those might work, the structure might potentially look like. You know, we're also looking at just... Beyond that, we're looking at the outreach that we're going to do for the actual comment period. You know, whether it's, you know, social media posts, you know, going out in community, doing, you know, other paid advertising, our public notices and news releases that we're going to go out with. I covered all of it earlier today, but I think I really just wanted to open up a discussion. I know we had some questions earlier about some communications pieces, and happy to deal those again and talk more about it. But really, I thought this would be a good time to just have a good chat about public involvement, and to get some good feedback and share some information if you guys have questions for me on, on PI-specific things. But we don't have a super set structure for how the public meetings are going to work right now, because we're still planning them and wanted to be open to feedback. I will say, I don't think that our overall presentation, like our... When we hold like informational meeting with the public, where we say, "Here's what the permit is", I don't think it's going to go to the level of detail that was shared today, because it's going to be the public versus the HAB. And you guys are a lot more, you know, well attuned to specifics. And that's a very good conversation we're having, is how do we share information about this permit and the way that folks can understand? And, you know, why is the permit important to them? Why should they care about it? You know, and what can they comment on? If it's 20,000 pages, we don't expect somebody to go and read 20,000 pages necessarily. So unless they want to. But, so those are just the kind of conversations that we're talking about and considerations that we're having. But definitely just wanted to open up the floor and if you have any questions for me or the team, or feedback and ideas, just really just wanted to kick it off and have a little bit of a roundtable.
How do you let the public know that the comment date is coming?
Yeah, so typically, we do an advance notice of a comment period. And typically, we do a 30-day advance notice. So for example, we have this new con comment period coming up, which there'll be a presentation at the twist tomorrow. But, so we went out with a 30-day advance notice back in July for that comment period. And it doesn't give you the exact specific date in case it floats a little bit. It gives you a roughly 30-day advance notice to say, "Hey, this comment period is coming up, and at a high level, here's what it is about." And so we do that typical 30-day advance notice. But for Rev 9, hey, what we're looking at doing is to send out something that's like 60 days out, especially how big it is. And we'll have some information available earlier on, like, you know, I think what we're hoping to maybe have our website live a little earlier on that just has some high-level information, and then we'll be able to add more stuff as the comment period kind of kicks off. But, so we wanted to be a little more proactive than 30 days, and do like a 60-day notice, a 30-day notice, a two-week notice. But that's typically what our comment period process looks like.
So, my question is really, how do you communicate that to the public that the comment period is coming up? I mean, do you advertise it?
I'll kind of do it, or what do you do?
Yeah. Good question. So we have, so when we send out that notice, it goes out to just our GovDelivery list of the interested Hanford parties, which are programing people also, is on. It's like 1,300 people or so. So, you know, not a lot of people typically, it's just more of the interested Hanford parties. And then, once it goes out, we'll put like a comment... Once the comment period starts, we'll put it out. And we'll share it on our social media channels, as well as we'll put an ad in the newspaper typically. And then for this one, for Rev 9, though, we're looking at, you know, doing far beyond that. We're looking to do like a news release and to just share a lot more broadly than we typically do for a comment period. And so that's some of the things that we're planning and working on right now. But really, you know, for most of our comment periods, that's kind of the crux of what we do, is we send out that standard kind of 30-day notice to the Hanford info distribution list, which people can sign up to. And then we'll just do our typical outreach when the comment period actually starts. But, so it's, that's about all we do right now for like our typical comment periods.
For a news release, it goes to the local paper?
Yeah, when we do a news release, at least for ecology, we send out a news release, have a ecology news distribution list that goes. And for any news release ecology issues, we issue a news release to our statewide list, so all the people that are subscribed to it get it. I have a list of what I call my Hanford reporters list, that people that are typically a lot more interested in Hanford stuff, that I send Hanford... That after the news release goes out, I'll forward it to like local reporters and Hanford reporters, and people that have an interest or have reached out to me before about Hanford. So I send out a news release to those folks specifically.
And do you normally include a website that people can go to to find something?
Yeah, well, it depends on the topic for most of the... So for example, say like our list of negotiations, you know, news release we went out with, we had links that we provided on there, you know, the ones that we had at the time. But that's typically what we try to do, is when I send out a news release, we'll have information on it, or I'll send information in addition to the news release. So it really just depends by circumstance on what has to be sent in.
Oh, and include the mail-in info sheet as well?
Oh, yeah, right. And sorry, the other advanced thing we do is we have a focus sheet that's typically four to six pages that highlights the comment period, what it is, what's involved at a high level. And that sends out, it publishes online, but we also have a snail mail list that we send it out like physical copies to that people are signed on to. So people get physical copies of those focus sheets. Yeah, thank you.
And now I say a queue of three, Mia, Dan, and Tom. Mia?
I'm really happy to hear you're planning about 10 meetings. That's awesome. And I'm wondering if a few of those could follow the today's format, also similar to the Hanford dialogue format of the small groups. I think it would need to be kind of more curated with a presentation, like many kind of talking casually about the unit groups, and then, so people know what they're there for. And then, having space for questions and things like that. I don't know if you're thinking of that, but...
Yeah, something that we've thought about, so that's good to hear.
Yeah.
That was going to be... Great minds think alike. That was going to be my comment, so.
And then the other factor that I've just been thinking more about, too, is when we go and talk about doing a bunch of public meetings, whether it's our roadshow across a bunch of different cities or online, is, yes, the communications team takes a lot of lead on it, which currently, it's just me and Angracel and Dana, so there's three of us. We have two positions that we have, one that is filled, and then Ginger Wyman's vacant position, she served with ecology for about 21 years at the nuclear waste program. We're finally about to fill that position, so we'll have a full comms team again. That being said, there's just five of us. It's just, you know, it's the ecology-led comment period, it's not TPA comment period. So there is only so much manpower and some stuff that we can do. But also, to bring SMEs along with us, such as matter experts. That's just something I'm mindful of, is scheduling and what other people have going on and schedules. So that's just another factor just to consider when we're talking about scheduling. It can be a little tough, you know, that kind of stuff. But it's, we're committed to doing the best that we can. But we are only something...
So we have Dan Solitz, Tom, then Chris. Dan?
Oh, thank you. You may have already thought of this, but I think it might not be a bad idea at the beginning of your outreach, whatever form it takes, is to, a brief explanation of what a permit is, why it's necessary. Is it like, when I go to build a house, I go to the city and get a permit? Or is it much more involved than that? What are the appeals? If there's a disagreement on what the permit requires? And maybe an explanation about why it's being rewritten after all of these years? So there's some basic language background on permitting process, what the roles are for the various different agencies in that permitting process, and where it's open to interpretation, where it's not.
Thank you, that's great. Good to have you.
Tom?
So, I was thinking, it might be fun to, when you do your 60-day blast, to put that out on social media and say, "Sign up for our GovDelivery information, learn more." So you're building sort of the coalition, so to speak, that are, people are interested in self-selecting. How many baseball cards do you think you're going to have?
Well, I've heard, so we're doing... So obviously, there's a lot more to the permit than the baseball cards. But baseball cards are, we're aiming to have about one for each unit group. That being said, we also are going to have some additional cards. Like we have, for example, the solid SWAC units. We have like two overview slides that one just talks about SWAC in general, and one has the list of all the SWAC units. So we have some kind of, you know, overview kind of slides thrown in. So let's just go off of the net estimate of 52 unit groups, and then add maybe, you know, four, five, six extra ones for like the overviews and the acronym list and that kind of stuff. And we're looking at maybe, you know, 57 to 60-ish maybe.
Could be a really fun sort of learning venue, where you print them out on poster boards all the way around the room, and have people walk around. And maybe every 10 cards or so, you have SME on computer screen that someone can ask a question about. So they don't need to travel, but they're just available that hour. And make it a little interactive art exhibit type thing.
Chris, your thoughts?
For your baseball cards, are you planning on having baseball cards that incorporate the site-wide permit terminology?
So we're going to have, like, an acronym abbreviations list that lists a lot of basically all the acronyms and abbreviations that are throughout the baseball cards. I think the overview slide that we have has got some definitions on it. So like, one of the title slides defines like what an operating unit group is, what a closing unit group is, so we have some of that incorporated. If there's feedback on what some folks maybe would recommend there to be specifically on, or like definitions, we're more than happy to consider that, maybe add another one.
Well, on the definitions here, one of the things that strikes me is, it'd be really nice to have a definition of closure. What is closure? People can take that to mean a number of things. So you have closing unit groups, sites that are undergoing closure, post-closure groups, sites that are already closed. And what is closed, what is closure? Your general public isn't going to know what the WAP definition of closure is.
Absolutely. I'll say one other thing that we've been doing in the last... I didn't mention this, but one other thing we've been doing over the last year, so is we've actually been going and making some weekly social media posts highlighting a different unit group each week that is... Actually, I think we're just about through most of them, we have a couple more to go for this batch, and we'll probably start them up again. So that's something that we've been doing in advance already. We've been doing some weekly posts on some unit groups that are in the permit.
And I especially love the bird.
Yes, especially use just the demographic with the bird for the ones that we don't have an...
You just don't know it yet.
Questions, suggestions, or feedback on the Rev 9 public involvement plans in the room or online?
I guess just kind of follow on what Dan mentioned about hitting the basics, and then what we were thinking about in terms of putting things out around the room. I do like the concept, the idea, Tom, about having someplace that's a little bit more interactive. But if there was a way to stair-step people through it, you know, this is what closure means, this is what waste is, this is what high-level waste is, this is what low-level waste is. And to slowly kind of orchestrate them through, so that you can really address the, why is it important? Why should you care? What, you know, so most people, if they come to those things, they want to learn something. So it's our opportunity to do that. And I like that idea, SMEs available, small groups, all of those things are very relevant.
You know, that's a good point you mentioned. Why should I care? Why should you care? Why should someone care about all this? I think that's really important to have right up front.
Yeah, I'll say, some of the ideas we had is we're thinking about planning some of the informational meetings, is, you know, possibly like a meeting that talks about, overall, what is the site-wide permit, some of that basics kind of stuff we talked about. And then, and maybe some like lunch and learn kind of meetings, where maybe they're not like 6 o'clock, they're maybe like 12 or 1. Of course, they'll all be recorded. But we do some meetings that focus on specifics within the permit, like maybe an online meeting that focuses specifically on operating unit groups, one that maybe looks at, you know, closing unit groups, that kind of stuff. So that's another idea we've explored, is for the informational meetings, breaking it up into other different sections, too. Because, you know, we spent three hours in the morning talking about it, we just brushed the surface.
What area of extent are you planning on having some of these meetings? And how far removed from here?
We're looking, yeah, we're looking, you know, obviously here, but also recently on the west side of the state and down in Oregon. And very interested in hearing feedback on, you know, where we should hold those. So if folks have ideas that they want to send me, either now or afterwards, we're continuing to have those conversations about what locations will look like and, you know, schedule and that kind of stuff. That's something that we're very much keeping top of mind, so.
So Ryan, does the topic that could continue on at future COE meetings?
Oh, 100%, yeah. I know we've already, we've done a couple of briefings with the COE over the last couple of years about some of this PI stuff that we've been developing. Like, I know, when I was out of the country last year, and Dana came and did a presentation and talked about some of this, and provided some of our initial baseball card examples. So, yeah, we're definitely going to keep coming and talking to COE about it. So this isn't the last conversation. And always reach out to me if you want to outside of the HAB. If an idea strikes you, I'm usually available, as long as I'm not...
In terms of the question of what it means to you, what is the plan for CEPA review and accompanying the permit with CEPA?
About talking about CEPA review and relating to the permit?
Yeah.
That's something, again, we're looking at how the structured meetings right now, about how we want to like format them, about what we share and how we share it. So that's still very much a conversation about that. So if there's any feedback on that, we'd be very interested.
Have you begun an impact statement to accompany the permit to answer questions like, what are the impacts from permitting this or not, or alternatives?
That's a question that I wish the net was here for, if we had it earlier. Because I'm more on the PI side, so I can follow up on the net, though, and see if there's anything like that.
Yeah, because that would likely delay issuing the permit for a year or more. Because it, that's not, it's not the permit that has the answers to, why does this matter? It's the review under the State Environmental Policy Act that accompanies it, allows people to comment and say, what are the impacts? And what are the alternatives considered or mitigation?
Yeah, like I said, that's a question for her, and CEPA, that's more better for other staff that will probably be here in the morning. But that's something we follow up on here.
And how I understand it is, whenever there is a remedy in question, there's always a CEPA analysis accompanied by that. I'm not 100% sure that it's done completely, but it's something that is always a prerequisite, so to say. But like Ryan said, you'll find out, and that you know.
Right.
Yeah.
So Jerry, did the holistic negotiations, did you go to that review?
That is one of our extensive comments that...
All of their exceptions.
And that is something that we discussed at two of the public meetings with Andy Fitz from the AG's office and Mark Silverstein. And we're having continued conversations about it. You know, the holistic negotiations, their response was, we're committing to permit requirements. And when we do the permit, we'll have a CEPA documentation, whether it's an EIS or other, if it doesn't need an EIS, sometimes you don't. But that's when it'll happen. Here, you're doing the permit, so you've got to have the EIS to accommodate.
Yeah, Rob, let me jump in. I, you know, it's a good conversation, it's an important conversation, but let's just do try and stay on topic for the permit conversation in PI that we're having. Like I said, not trying to stop that conversation, I just want to make sure we're staying on track here.
That'll be for Rev 10.
But I do want to say that the importance of that, having it accompanied, is that's where the plain language review of if you, you know, the impact of, you know, having a deadline of 2040 for doing something with a tank, here's the impact of that. And here's, we considered having that moved... we considered having that moved up to 2030 or extending it to 2050, and here's the impact. That's the plain language where you get that and why it's supposed to be complicated.
Gosh, other suggestions or feedback for public involvement plans? In the rooms?
This is an awful question to think of the work involved with it, but is the permit being offered in any languages other than English?
No.
What about the baseball cards?
I think the baseball cards, it's all similar because of the scope of work. That's something that we've had a lot of conversations about for what we, you know, what you can and should we translate. That's all, and that's not just specific to Rev 9, that's a conversation that we have ongoing for, you know, especially starts with the expectation that you're going to translate every single permit document. I think it's really, really... We have a translation team at the agency, but if we, Hanford alone, we'd probably overwhelm our translation team for the next couple of years.
Even if there's a four-sentence elevator pitch for every baseball card and you translate that, that might, you know, go a long way towards showing people where they should be looking and getting help to understand it.
Anyone else?
Amber. So Ryan, what, in terms of, these are all good ideas for general public involvement, and so I guess tying back into the conversation about the work group around the HAB work group to give HAB feedback on the permit, is there anything you have to suggest back to us that we could do as the HAB? To provide, you know, meaningful input back to Ecology?
Yeah, it's a great question, and it's one I've pondered a lot about, because I know that, I've looked back at 2012 and what was done in 2012, because obviously I wasn't here for it. I've heard a lot about how that process, my, there was, you know, my understanding was task force kind of tackled things before the comment period started, the one that after. And then your guys, the HAB's Advice 262, the actual advice points, I think, is between 10 to 11 pages, but the advice, like, package, including all of the supplemental information and stuff goes on, like, it's like a 70, 75-page document. And as Tom has alluded to, I don't foresee that level of advice happening to go around just because of the time commitment and, you know, availability and all that stuff. So, you know, when I thought about that, I think that's why, you know, my recommendation would be, our influence in advice is, you know, consider if there's ways to strategize, you know, your, any potential advice you have, whether it's focusing on things that HAB cares the most about, that within the statewide permit, we're looking back on the last advice and maybe seeing if things were incorporated. And obviously, I know, working the best we can to get the advice response back to you guys, or, you know, maybe looking at, you know, how does the HAB's, you know, values and stuff tie into, you know, the permit removal and recommendations there. So really just try to encourage, you know, and like you said, it might be a bit of a tight timeline. Comment period's going to be 120 days right now. And so I think the biggest piece of advice or thoughts I have on thinking about advice is trying to rack it in a way, you know, strategically, in a way that you, that's doable, that you can get, get some, you know, good advice passed in that timeframe, because I don't, I don't, I just don't think it's possible to do the level of advice that was done back in 2012 with the current kind of resources that HAB has at the time and...
Fewer meetings. And we have fewer meetings.
Yeah. And then, and then also the Ecology staff, you know, will support the best that we can. But it is hard, it was already tough to get everybody through that we got in today. We had some staff that were out, we had coverage, that's another thing to think about too, is, you know, we'll support the best we can, and I will get people here in the room the best I can, but it's just, same thing back to scheduling sometimes, it's challenging, so...
But you will ask for help when you want help, yes?
Yes, always. Like I said, I'll always, just like Lindsay says with EDV, I'll always take the request back, get an answer, whether it's yes or no, or if they can't support, they can't support. But yeah, so always, we'll support the best I absolutely can with whatever path you guys decide for.
I was saying, if you want our support, ask for it and we'll do it the best we can.
That's why Rev 9's been on the requested advice for the last, since we started doing the requested advice this year. So we love advice on it, so that's why I'm trying to, you know, make it happen with you guys, so.
I'll recruit you to come do our...
Right? Post-DM Salem.
Is EM headquarters reviewing this document too, in the sense that they might say this is unacceptable to DOE?
I can't talk for DOE, I know the...
I don't have the answer to that, I'd have to ask.
Yeah, if I had to hazard a guess, though, this is a Ryan guess, and it's, again, I have no knowledge of this, whether it's accurate enough, I'd have to hazard a guess and say the local DOE folks are working very, very closely with Ecology on the permit, and headquarters might not be reviewing like every little thing itself, but maybe the local offices is updating headquarters. But again, that's just Ryan conjecture, I can't speak for DOE process.
Last question, and get back to you, Chris.
Yeah, the only reason I'm asking is if our DOE has to send their presentations and get approval from EM headquarters, you know, how that goes, and we have this massive 2,000, 20,000-page document, it's hard to imagine that somehow DOE headquarters are going to be in the loop.
We could ask the crowd, the field office if they were able to negotiate with the Mexico directly. That might be their closest analog.
Last question.
Ryan, is there, and I know 120 days is a lot, but is there any openness to honoring an extension if enough people ask for it?
Yeah, if I, similar to any comment period, if we get significant public interest and requests for an extension, that's something that we do consider. Like I think if I have to look back on those dates for the 2012 one that Net shared, that was, that's longer than 120 days, I'm not pretty sure, so I think that we extended it to 12. But yeah, it's something where we'll, we get requests and we'll consider extension requests.
Second to go, you were looking for input for outreach?
Yes, Don.
Cold War Patriots? Can we talk to that organization?
Not just Hanford in general or the permit?
Hanford in general, or you want... Yeah.
I haven't, I'd have to go back and talk to Ginger and see if she ever did. That's, we have had to take a lot of steps down in our outreach over the last year because of our short staffing, how much other stuff is going on, I'd have to check and see if that's an organization, and Ginger wasn't touched with it previous. If not, it's a group that I'm sure that we would love to connect with, to be one connected to everybody.
They had a convention or something, trade show, I think. There are a lot of people there. I don't know if it's grand.
What was the name, Cold War?
Cold War Patriots.
Is that local too?
I think that is local.
For those of us at the site, is there anything you hope they would touch on that you didn't hear about already?
No, like I said, it's just a continuing conversation. As we continue to plan PI, we want to be very open to feedback and ideas, because we want to do the best that we can and have a really good meaningful public involvement for the comment period. So again, if you're outside of us coming and updating HAB or the COE on public involvement for Rev 9, if you have ideas or any questions for Mia or the team, just reach out to us anytime, offer your feedback. If you have suggestions on like meeting-specific stuff, like more of the meeting structure, locations, timing, that kind of fun stuff, always, always open to hear it, so please send that outside of meeting, if you think of something after the meeting too.
One final comment from Jim?
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, you know, with an eye towards like environmental justice, you reach out through the CEOs and kind of, you know, represent the socioeconomic or minority groups and those kind of things.
Yeah, when we're doing our outreach, especially for like Rev 9, that's, like I said, we're looking to do expanded outreach and then just like sending to just like our Hanford info list, so we're going to be looking to do specific outreach, sharing that information beyond the group that list, so looking to the different groups that, you know, focus on various different topics, including environmental justice focuses, that's very important. So that's definitely something we're looking to share very broadly.
Yeah, so our final agenda item was initially deciding whether or not the HAB wanted to provide input on the Rev 9A when the public comment period started. We answered that question about half an hour ago. So question is, is there anything else on that subject we would like to touch on before? I guess, including for the day.
What? Sorry, I'm in process, Mark. What committee is sponsoring this work group? Is it, is it being sponsored out of the committee in the whole or is it being sponsored out of ESC?
I think out of the ESC.
Okay.
Because the committee at the whole is just a meeting.
Okay.
So you have to come out of ESC.
So it matters because once we come up with advice or a product, it has to pass out of the committee that sponsored it before it can go to the full board. So this one would have to go through the ESC before it can go to the full board. So just for everybody's, yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure that was documented.
I mean, yeah. Ideally, it would, I could see it, depending on the timing, it would be really great to have it taken to the draft advice, taken to all of the technical committees, you know, and said that there is buy-in from the committee level, and the ESC is just the final blessing.
That would like to be February, March.
Yeah, it all depends on the timing. That would be in a perfect world, then we get twist, then carve, and, you know, you'd be looking at all of your specific areas. If you're good with it, then ESC blesses it off and we go to the full board, and there shouldn't be any issues theoretically at the full board level, if we've worked it that way. Kind of similar to what we used to, we've done with the work priorities advice. But yeah, it all depends on timing and second thing. We'll see what happens.
We're going to toss them out.
Those cookies were delicious. Put their hands up.
My other quick follow-up was if there was any specific questions, if you had any feedback groups that you wanted to follow up on, please come let me know and I will track those down for you. You can either follow me after, or follow me after the meeting or send me an email. I just want to make sure if you did have questions for SMEs that they don't get missed, I'm going to follow up with the group, just to chat with them, to kind of recap it, but I'm not sure if they jotted down questions or not. So if you had specific questions you think you've answered, please send them my way.
Closing thoughts?
Local library tomorrow?
We, everyone is invited to join the three committee meetings that are during at the Richmond Library, looking at traffic safety advice, a couple of exciting tank waste-related presentations, and discussing M15 and M16 milestones.
All right, thanks everyone, this meeting's adjourned.